Greetings. Our staff's ready, recording started, life is good. All right, I'm going to call the order, the June 24th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Roll call.
Chair Simpson.
Here.
Vice Chair Cottler.
Here.
Commissioner Clifford.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioners Walker, Robinson, and Griffin are absent.
All right, thank you. Agenda review, we have two items of hearing, one's old business and new business and our regularly scheduled items, are there any changes or additions? All right, yes.
It's up to you and I guess you and the commission, but I talked to you about you can switch the order if there's not a lot of people, I'm not sure, your deliberations, I suspect, might go longer on one than the other or not, so, I mean, it's entirely up to you.
Okay. I think we noticed it in this order, does anybody have any objection to keeping it in this order? Okay, then we'll proceed as printed then. Okay, we have a consent agenda which consists of the May 27th Planning Commission meeting minutes, everybody have an opportunity to read those? Are there any corrections or additions? Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
All motion.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second for approval of the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? And then council liaison announcements.
That's the TSP with your change.
All right, thank you Mayor Middleton. Zoom in right along, staff announcements, Brad.
The council passed the TSP with your amendments. And then just a couple of things, I don't think we're going to have a meeting scheduled for the 8th, we don't really have anything on that agenda right now, so, I guess you can extend your 4th of July holiday plans. And then I just wanted to give you guys an idea of what we're going to be doing this year, just briefly, we met this morning, the Community Development Department, and there's a lot of, you're going to be seeing the sewer, sanitary sewer master plan this year, the stormwater master plan this year, the Sherwood West Concept Plan, which we plan to put an RFP out sometime next month for that, the Tonkin Employment Area where we're working with Washington County to do countywide industrial lands, I guess analysis for lack of a better word, because I'm not entirely sure what's going into that study And the ongoing project of the Cedar Creek Trail, so, there will be a lot on our plate in addition to some of the things that we'll have coming in for private development, as you know, on the 22nd of July, you'll be hearing for the first time, the planned unit development expansion of the Springs Living Facility over here by the Catholic Church, so, just a heads up, busy year.
Okay. Bob?
And just to tag on to one of Brad's things, even though the TSP passed, we're still going through an implementation and a rate study that's going to follow up in this next fiscal year to finally pull all that stuff together into one little package. And then one note of items that we were talking about last time we met was traffic calming issues in the Lindley, on Lindley Way over there in that neighborhood, there's an internal process underway that's trying to deal with several neighborhoods that have traffic calming issues, or traffic flow issues. The internal process involves Public Works, the Police Department, TV, FNR, Engineering, Community Development Division, plus City Management. And basically, we're trying to sort of get our arms around the policies that we want to establish and how to deal with this stuff. We haven't ignored everything, we haven't dropped it, we know it's out there, we're trying to, number one, solve the problem first by getting enforcement action to make sure that we make a clear distinction between traffic flow and traffic speed. We want it to be safe, even if it's a high-volume traffic flow problem that we're dealing with, we want it first to be safe. So, the Police Department has taken the lead with all this information that we've got right now, and we're still working in planning and trying to figure out how we're going to get all the other items taken care of, which includes, if we do come up with a system that we think we can implement, how we're going to fund it. And that's a, that's a big question that still hasn't been resolved as of yet, so, nothing's been dropped, we're still going through with stuff, it's just, it takes a bit of coordination.
Okay, and what's a timeframe for follow-up that you think a new update would be available for people following?
I would say, given my discussions with the Community Development Director, Julia Hyduk, probably within three months, four months out, we're trying to get together and start getting all the policies written. That still leaves the unresolved issue of how to fund anything that we do, and that is still, that might be after that.
Okay, all right, thank you very much for that update. Are there any other announcements from staff?
No ma'am.
All right, we have community comments, those are items that are not already on the agenda, and if you have community comments, or if you would like to testify for either of the public hearings tonight, we ask you that you fill out one of the blue cards that's in the back of the room and turn it in to the Recording Secretary. I have one so far for community comments, Robert Claus.
Robert James Claus, 222-121 Southwest Pacific Highway. And I'm going to try to separate two things. One, you're supposed to make public policy and the staff's supposed to administer it. Now, at Berkeley, a fellow named Alonso and Teeds were the first ones to develop mathematical models for predicting so you could visualize what would happen, other people had tried it, Bill Alonso was number one. Alonso was the first one, and Bay Area Rapid Transit District was another result of it, where we actually visualized what would happen with land use planning and zoning. Now, you may be surprised, WAC Bennett, when he built Whistler, did exactly the same thing, and he brought in all of the tribes there, because if we hadn't separated that highway far enough, it would have interfered with their tribal rights, fishing, and many other things. Now, people were arguing about that and not realizing you could visualize exactly what you're doing on a computer. You are going to enter a very dangerous period now in Sherwood because you've used up lots of your slack, as Bob pointed out to you. You know, trick question they always say, is on an interstate, what, at what speed do you carry the most traffic? You can always tell if you're dealing with a traffic engineer, because the first thing you'll say is 27 miles an hour. Now, if you think about that, there are reasons, there's spacing, there's density, it carries all the origin destination trips. You can visualize exactly what happens on a freeway as you start changing that. You're going to have to start visualizing in this town what you want, because you're getting to the point, uses are going to crowd other uses out, and they're going to crowd out because your transportation can't carry it. And it's that simple. You always go through these low periods. Had a classic case with Doyle, Doyle had half enough traffic. You say, how do they know that? Because if you ever are lucky enough to go to the National Academy of Sciences Transportation Research Board, and that is not a federal agency, it's funded by the government, but it's completely separate of the government, they have people in all of their institutes that look nationally into computer models, how many parking spaces you have to have per thousand square feet, there are other ways to do it, but per thousand square feet is clumsy, but you'll find out, he got along just fine, until recently. And with the addition of other things, he has 50% of the parking he needs. That's going to start happening in other places. Now, Doyle took care of that at a huge expense, but what I'm telling you is, you want to be very careful from here on in, because I was lucky enough to be employed by Arthur D. Little when they wanted to plan the urban renewal in San Francisco. We had three models, David Rockefeller won it, but we were able to tell him exactly what had happened, even up to the point they were going to have to have a ferry. There are people that can do that, your planners can do that, you have people, and you're entering that stage now, and as a policymaker, you're going to have choices. You've got repairing corridors you're going to have to protect, and you're going to have to ask if you're protecting them for the environment and a sustainable building, or you're doing them for walkways, and they're not the same thing, which is simply. But that step of conceptualization, this city is ideally postured to do theoretically, because you are the policymakers. You make those policies, you go to your staff, your staff goes to the expert communities in the United States, and they tell you what you have to do in order to sustain that as a livable environment. Once you get to the point, Sherwood is, you're pushing over on your transportation. And I can tell you right now, many of the models, and I know Kerry Keys, knew Kerry Keys when he did those models, I told him Kerry, those traffic circles are not going to carry what you're putting on them, and you know it. And he said, but that's the most money we have. What does that mean? Means the next people come along, they're going to have huge extra expenses, they're going to have to go back and do things. And you want to start spending time, because some of the things they've done in this town, you're going to have incredible traffic shocks, you're not going to believe it. And I just hope that you separate back into that public policy thing more here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything they would like to address under community comments? All right. Then we will move on to old business, which is the public hearing, the continuation of public hearing PUD 1401 and SUB 1401 Cedar Brook Planned Unit Development. And as a continuation, do we read the quasi-judicial land hearing script again? Will we would ask for any?
Yeah, you might want to go through any, like, order of testimony, just so that people can...
I could do that, I was just wondering, we do ask if there's any subsequent ex parte contact bias or conflict of interest not previously disclosed, correct? All right, so, since this is a continued hearing, we have the applicant, we have, oh, staff will present a staff report, there's going to be questions by the hearing body for staff, then we will reopen the public hearing portion of this, the applicant will have up to 30 minutes to split between presentation and rebuttal, persons in favor of the application will have four minutes each, persons opposed to the application will have four minutes each, and then the rebuttal from the applicant will be remainder of their 30 minutes, and then at that time, we will close the public hearing, there'll be final comments by staff, questions of staff if anybody commissioned, and then discussion and deliberation by the commission. And this is a recommendation by the Planning Commission to the City Council, the City Council is the final authority on this, and they will hold their own public hearing. So, staff report?
Thank you. So, we were here a couple of weeks ago on June 10th, and we continued the hearing, the Planning Commission reviewed some of the materials that the applicant had presented and directed the applicant to submit additional information that you received in your packet last week. They've marked it as exhibit, I believe, L through P, it includes a memo from the applicant addressing some of the exceptions to the standards, as well as some maps, and also example of some CCNRs that they use, referring to parking, as well as the, a parking district as well, that Sherwood uses as a potential solution or mitigation measure to the parking issues that have been raised throughout the course of the testimony for this project. In addition to the information in your packet, you received via email yesterday, a letter submitted by Mara Broadhurst, as well as an email from Joe Broadhurst concerning some issues about the PUD. And you received that tonight, there's table copies for those in the audience, like to take a look at that. A couple of things addressed in the letter was in reference to the parking issue, and whether density could be reduced and add some additional parking. And parking is considered part of the net developable acre, so it wouldn't really influence density at all to add parking spaces for the project, as well as the issues concerning the rezoning to neighborhood commercial, or an alternative to the commercial designation. And that's not what the applicant had proposed, so it hadn't been really reviewed in detail, an alternative to the zoning. There are additional commercial nodes within the area, parking lot, Dr. Doyle's office building, as well as another lot adjacent to the property as well, that's also commercial, as well as, there's some commercial areas to the south of the property as well, on the other side of the highway. With respect to some of the engineering issues, Bob Gilati, the city engineer is here, and he can address the issue concerning the stormwater, as well as the issue concerning bonding for the trail to Wyndham Ridge, if you'd like to talk about that right now.
Okay, the stormwater issue comes up within the letter submitted by Mara Broadhurst, and basically, the, it's not a direct discharge of stormwater to the creek during normal flow conditions. Basically, the stormwater that needs to be treated, which is the design storm that Clean Water Services established, will be used going down to the water quality facility that exists, that may need to be extended or upgraded to handle the additional flow going to it, but it will be treated according to Clean Water Services standards. What happens is, is when you get above the design storm event, the overflow, there will be a high-flow event, and that can be discharged to the stream, because the volume of the water that is discharging from the system is generally mixing, and there's some dilution that goes along with it, which is why they allow that to happen. But basically, the engineer of record will have to make sure that the design parameters meet the stormwater quality event. The second item is about the trail bonding. Now, as far as that goes, there were a couple of different ways of dealing with this, but in the, in the city municipal code section, or the construction permit, it's 16.108-020, item D, improvement guarantees. Generally speaking, when you're building a public infrastructure item as part of the construction methodology or process, the developer will provide us with some sort of surety guarantee that he's going to build the facility within the timeframe of the overall site development. So with that being said, a bond, a bonding for the facility means that it's going to be constructed during the same timeframe that the rest of the site's going to do, and that the bond covers it in case he fails to do so, in which case, we'll pick up the project and we'll finish it. So, like, with all the internal streets and everything in there, they're going to be providing a bond for all that work that they'll be doing there, and if they fail to complete it, then we'll take the bond and we'll finish it. Now, the issue comes up is providing a bond for a long-term promise to construct a facility is a different animal altogether. I'm not sure that I have ever had a indefinite time period bond issued to construct something. I've never had something like that. Basically, what we've done, in my experience, is if the developer wishes to forestall building an infrastructure item for a longer period of time, then there would be something similar to a cash equivalency.
So, we have a condition F5 that says design before issuing the building permit, so, I think what you're saying is that they're not going to necessarily build the trail before they get building permits for the houses, they're going to design, construct, or pay a fee in lieu, and that includes some form of bond process that they guarantee that they'll either build it or pay 125% of the cost, so that they can get their building permits. Is that how it works?
Generally speaking, what we do is, in certain cases, like what we're doing with the D.R. Horton project right now, they can get their building permits, they can't get occupancy until it's completed. So, if they want to bond for a process, a construction process, at 125% of the construction cost, that's fine, but generally speaking, we get the public infrastructure items completed before we grant occupancy for any of that stuff.
And that's G5, which is install the path and amenities before final occupancy?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, that's how it works?
That's how, that's how, if you were going to do a bonding scenario, that's how that would work. If it's an extended, like, you want to get all the buildings up, and you want to get people moving in, and you want to hold that off for a couple of years to determine what's going on, I don't think a surety company would issue a bond for that, because usually what happens is, the surety company says, okay, you're going to pay us for, and it's a reduced amount, you know, it's not 125%, it's like 10% of the value they pay. But that means the surety company's on tap for that, and they don't like that uncertainty that goes with that. So usually, it comes down to, if you want an extended type of period in which to build this thing, during which time you've already got occupancy for all the rest of your facilities, usually it's going to be a cash equivalent, that, you know, according to the code, it's not only a performance bond that we'll accept, but it's a cash deposit or irrevocable standby letter of credit. Now, those two items means that that money goes into a bank account, and it's available to the city, and they don't, they can draw against it as they construct it, we can release money as they construct it, but they got to have the money upfront, put in the bank for 125% of the construction cost, then as they go through the construction, they have to pay for their construction, then they can draw against it to reimburse themselves for that construction cost. It's, it's sort of a real heavy hammer to use, but it's the only way that I know of to work the scenario, that if they aren't going to build it with the rest of the site, then the other two options will be the only thing that we could, we could, we could use.
So we've got the correct conditions in place then already?
I would, I would say yes.
Okay.
Where are the, is it conceptual right now? Or there, or were the, did an engineer actually come out and inspect the site to determine the cost of the infrastructure?
The, a standard process project, I think you could ask the developer's engineer about this, but typically, you have estimates, and they're fairly industry-standard estimates, and you can go through and pretty much itemized all the stuff, and you'd be within 10%, 15% of what the actual cost is going to be with, you know, all the unknowns, maybe an extra little bit in there for that, but their estimates are usually fairly accurate with a standard construction process. So they know that upfront, and we would confirm that, we have our own ways of confirming that, we have other projects that we would match it against, and that's normal for us.
The other question I had was, based on the stormwater, the existing stormwater facility, has that, as it stands now, based on what it's being used for, has it, has it ever gone over the capacity? Has there ever been times?
There's never been a capacity problem with it, it, some of the maintenance has been kind of iffy at times, but it's a stable, it's a stable system, and it's performing well.
All right, thank you very much. Any further staff reports?
Yes, thank you. In review of the staff report, I would like to address Scribner's error found on page nine of the Planning Commission packet from June 10th, under option four, there's, on the second line, I'd like to delete "amount would be."
Okay.
And with respect to page 18, or page 19 of the staff report, in review of the recent plans that the applicant submitted, reducing the lots to lot, to 65 lots instead of 66, I would ask whether the lot depth exception is still necessary, and what lot is requesting, and if it is still necessary, which lot is, will be not meeting the lot depth standard of 80 feet, if any? Clarification on that. And then on page 23, in reference to the design standards for the townhome developments, I'd ask, under building design, the, the buildings will go through a process of final development plan approval, and the elevations will be prepared at that time and under that review process. So, a recommended condition would be to add, prior to final development approval, provide plans that, that meet the criteria for, so that the front facade of the townhome may not include more than 40% of the garage door area, and that the roofs of the each attached townhome must be distinct from the other.
That would be a D16, that we're just adding, that they beat the design criteria?
That'd be correct.
Okay, because from what we've been given, we don't have front elevations for all the buildings, and we can't determine it at this time, but during site plan review, that's when it would be done.
It would be confirmed. The applicant prepared what's called an architectural pattern book, and they've identified that they are going to be producing plans that will meet this criteria, but it can't be confirmed until we actually see the plans and review each plan individually, each townhome units.
So, adding condition D16 ties the two together then?
That's correct.
Okay.
And also during the course of the testimony of the applicant, they referred to the trail connection that they're, that they will be providing as part of the Cedar Creek Trail. The Cedar Creek Trail will, is under design review currently, we don't have an actual alignment, but it will likely, it will likely go on the north side of Cedar Brook Way, further away from this development, and this trail will not be part of the Cedar Creek Trail, but, but may serve as a connection point in some fashion as the Cedar Creek Trail gets developed over time.
Okay.
And that's extending my comments, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Sorry, I tried to write it downtown home. Does anybody have any questions of staff before we call the applicant? All right, if we could have the applicant come forward and state your name and address for the record. And, before you start your presentation, I'll just ask, go ahead and say your name for...
Absolutely. Good evening, my name is Steve Miller, with D.R. Horton Homes, 4380 Southwest McAdam Avenue, Suite 100, Portland, Oregon, 97239.
Okay, and before you start, I did, you understand what we were saying about the added condition of approval, D16, that would be just tying down that your elevations, the final elevations will match the townhome design standards?
Correct.
Okay, and are you in agreement with that?
Oh, we've talked about that, and I understand, you know, that that's kind of the process, so, not a problem.
All right, thank you.
Yep. So, here we are again, back here a couple of weeks later from the previous hearing, and as Michelle has indicated, I have submitted some information into the record to answer some of your previous questions, and so, we did prepare a parking layout for you with some locations for the fire hydrants. And so we did prepare a parking layout for you with some locations for the fire hydrants. And the one fire hydrant that's shown on Street A that's on the west side, our preference would be to locate on the, on the opposite side, so we don't lose a parking space there. But the other one that's down on the, the west side along Cedar Brookway, that one probably will be in that location. And so you'd have a, a loss of one space from the on-street parking with the fire hydrant. I, I know that was a concern with how many fire hydrants that were going to be needed and what that would do to the parking. And so at this time, we're anticipating the loss of one space relocating the fire hydrant that's on the east side of proposed Street A to the west side, excuse me, from the east to the west. It's always, when you're looking at it, you always think north is up there, so I got to orient myself. So anyhow, we wouldn't want to lose a space there on Street A. And then the other question that you had had to do with setbacks, and we put together a, a color-coded map there. And so one thing I want to clarify is the minimum side yard setback for all the units is four feet. So in every proposed unit, the minimum setback would be four feet. In some instances, it will be greater. For example, lot one through three, one will have a little bit more of a setback to the street, even though the property line will be four feet. Same with twenty-eight, that will be four feet to the property line, but it'll be more to the street because of the open space tract. So just trying to clarify some of that for you. And that would be the same with like Lot fifty-three. At the, it kind of pies down that lot as you go from Cedar Brook to the alley. At the alley, that would be four feet, but as you go towards the street, it increases and gets greater. And so what we're trying to identify is what the minimum setbacks are that this project needs to be able to be developed. Some of your other questions that you had had to do with porches. Our smallest porch setback is on the interior lots of the attached product to the open space and that would be a four-foot setback. So even though the setback is four feet to the street, you would have all the open space before you have these buildings interfacing with, with the street. So it, it is a tight setback on the lot, but in terms of its relationship to the street, you can see it's much greater. All the setbacks for the lots one through twenty-eight and twenty-nine through thirty-eight will have a fifteen-foot rear yard setback, so there will be reasonable rear yards for these homes. In terms of the single-family detached, you can see there's kind of a range of setbacks there. And again, we kind of talked about this the last time we were here and it has to do with how they interface with the street and how the street is designed. It has to meander around the bend there and so that has an impact on, on some of these setbacks. Another issue that was brought up, I believe, was a discussion about a fourteen-foot setback and we went back and researched some of the past planning commission decisions that were done for, for our projects. And what we discovered was with the, the zone change for this property, that was not an issue. But in one of our other projects where we went to a more standard density residential zone, that's where that issue came up and that's where the planning commission requested a fourteen-foot setback. So I just wanted to clarify that, that you did make that recommendation, but it was just on a different project and, and not this one. I believe it was our, our Daybreak subdivision that we're working on right now. And so just wanted to make sure we knew, you know, where, where that came from. We talked about in the last hearing how we could try to address some of the concerns that staff had for our units fronting along Minneke for the parking and I submitted a document into the record, draft CCNRs. And within those CCNRs, we had the provision in there saying that the garages shall be made available for parking, that you can't store items in there to the detriment of the parking. So we will have that in the CCNRs to say that any homeowner that comes in to purchase in here will know upfront that this is a requirement that they have to adhere by. And so that will be enforced by the CCNRs and by the HOA. Just thinking here through some of the other issues we talked about. In terms of, you know, issues that have been raised since the hearing was continued, we'd be happy to answer any of the questions that you have in regard to those issues that were raised. The only other one I'd like to talk about right now is the last issue that was brought up by, by staff and the trail bonding. And really this, what we're trying to do is to set up a process that allows both us to build homes and get this trail done in a manner that addresses some of the implications that we have to get the trail built, which is an extensive permitting process with CWS because of the wetlands there. And that's a very time-consuming permitting process, it can take up to a year depending on the issues we run into with them. And so what we're trying to do is be allowed to go ahead and build homes with the understanding that we will address this trail and the trail will be taken care of prior to us completing the project. And so our preference would be to have it bonded for and have the trail constructed and in place prior to final occupancy of the last dwelling unit on the project. So that would give us the ability to go ahead and build and sell homes while we're working on this issue and not being in a situation where we have an approved project, but we can't sell any homes. And so we're just trying to work with staff and, and the planning commission here to put a condition of approval in place that allows us to go ahead with this project and sell homes, but also get that trail built prior to us exiting the project. And so if you tie it to final occupancy of the last structure, you still have a trigger point, if you will, that keeps us on the hook to getting the, the trail built before we can exit the project. And so that's what we would ask for. And so I'll let you guys kind of think about that, but that would help us at least initiate the project and, and get something happening out here. In terms of the eighty-foot lot depth, all the interior lots, fifty-four through sixty-five will be less than eighty feet in depth. All the remaining lots will meet the depth requirement. So the interior lots there are going to be our narrowest and shallowest lots that we have, but the exterior lots will be eighty feet or deeper to meet that requirement. And again, that had to do with shifting the road, so as we had to shift Cedar Brook up to get out of that area there that's, that's identified as a wetland area, wetland boundary, that reduced our lot width, so we could maintain the open space that we needed. So that, that's kind of how that worked out.
So you removed a lot from the middle of this, but you weren't able to, because when it went through before, it was one single lot that looked like it was not going to meet and now that you've removed that lot, all the lots became narrower?
Well, what happened is the lot that was adjacent to Lot fifty-four, as we shrunk the street down, we couldn't even fit the home there anymore. And so we had to eliminate that lot, but it also shrunk all the lots down in that area. And so we have now, we just have a smaller space as a result of that road shifting. And so it did have an impact on, on those lots and it also resulted in one lot being removed from the design.
Okay. Do you know the lot depth now?
These homes are fifty feet and the front, the setback is twenty, so that's seventy and then you have four more feet to the front, so you're looking at about seventy-four feet in depth.
Okay.
And so at, at this point, I'm really more open to answering your questions than going through a whole presentation because I believe you're up to speed with the project and understand the issues. And so I'd like to try and just respond to any other concerns that you might have and, and respond to the information that we've submitted to see if any of that raises additional questions so we can focus in on, on what your concerns are.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the staff report then will be updated to reflect seventy-four feet on fifty-four through sixty-five. That's how we'll, we just want to make sure we have it right going forward. Does anybody have questions of the applicant?
Oh, I do. Regarding the, the Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue letter that was part of our package, it indicated about turning radius and one parking spot space being removed. Have you addressed that?
I thought the turning radius issue that they raised was on the, the alley. And so we have addressed the alley turning radius there where it comes to the open space. I guess it would be there between lots thirty-eight and thirty-nine as it bends around there and we did make that wider.
Maybe, okay, you could be right. I just wanted to clarify that. This is line seven, the pork shop diversion on Minneke Parkway and A Street, so it's a corner.
So-
Oh, I see. Okay, yeah, so what you're talking about there is the, the parking space on A Street, the last parking space before it enters into Minneke Parkway. And so that's a space that could be eliminated if it is impeding movements. And so again, it was not, put our project below the parking requirement. We would still meet that, but that's something that we could eliminate if it is impeding the project.
Okay.
All right. If there's more, no more questions for the applicant at this time, we will-
I, I do have one more. Sorry.
No, no, no problem.
Are we discussing the CCNRs as well?
Pardon?
The CCNRs that you submitted. Can I ask a question about that?
Absolutely.
Okay. If you look on page-
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I don't have them with me today, but I do know them pretty well, so hopefully we can work on that.
Page forty-two, under landscape.
Okay.
Let me just read it for, to you. Towards the, probably three-quarters of the way down, it says, "Such maintenance shall include mowing, irrigation, and maintenance of all street trees in accordance with the City of Hillsborough's approved street tree plan."
That was a typo, my bad. And then, and that's why they were submitted as draft CCNRs with the understanding that there could be an error there, so I can certainly correct that. But the, the intent is to show that we're going to have mechanisms in place to address front yard landscaping and, and the additional landscaping that the seeds, that the HOA would be required to maintain. So we do have a lot of different CCNRs and so that one just got overlooked there to make that, that correction.
Yeah, and there'd be one more correction on page eight. It's at the bottom, the parking as required by the City of Sherwood, it removed the planning commission because we, we, we are not the final authority, it's the council and they are representative, so.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure-
It says that as required by the City of Sherwood Planning Commission, it's not, we, we only make a recommendation, so it's the city council or in general terms, it's just the City of Sherwood, so I would-
And again, I think the, the way to address that is to just have a condition of approval there that says, you know, prior to, whenever you would like them, you know, that we work with staff to get a set of CCNRs that, that is agreeable, so we can make those corrections.
Yeah, but I, I do appreciate what you did, so the CC, the final CC and, CCNRs will be very close to what we see with Scribner errors and, and some updates because I did see some other references to potentially other community requirements.
That's correct, that's correct. We, we will certainly go back through that and make sure we have our notations accurately depicted in there and, and that's something that gets recorded with the, with the subdivision and so we want to make sure that that is accurate prior to that point. I wanted to make sure I had something in to show you that, you know, we are thinking about this and, and we do intend to take care of all aspects of the project.
Okay, thank you.
So I see you added the, the parking district information here that we talked about. So I just had one question because I didn't see it and maybe it's in the CCNRs and I missed it, but the first line says, "All cars parked on street during specified enforcement periods will need a permit." So where do you talk about, what's, what is the specified enforcement period?
Again, we'll be working with the, the police department on that. We, we've, you know, we've been in contact with them and they are on board to work with us, but until we know where this is going and, and how that's going to end up, they are basically saying it's premature. So we will follow whatever the guidelines are to establish that and work with the police department to have it in place. Again, I think it's just a function of a condition of approval to have that set up at a certain timeframe for the project, wherever you folks feel that needs to be. And the police department is on board with us to make that happen.
So this was for more, more for our information, that it's a process you have to go through once you get to, and then the CCNRs will be revisited by the homeowners association?
That's correct. And so really what I was trying to do is, by submitting that in, is to show you that we, we know where it is, we, we found the information, we've been in contact with the police department and we're certainly willing to do this for the project if the planning commission feels this is what is necessary in order to address the concerns that the public had for the parking.
Okay. Yeah, I was more, I was more just interested in whether you had, had made some assumption as to what you were looking at that enforced period being, if that was something that you had thought about. It's every day, all day, or for this hour, this hour?
At this time, the police department has the expertise on what's not working out there and so we would try to work with them on those timeframes so we could get it where they see the need being. And I imagine that would be probably, you know, after five o'clock and up until probably six in the morning or so, seven in the morning, when people leave and go to work. And so there'd be, you know, from seven to five, maybe there would be no enforcement and then from about four-thirty or five until seven in the morning, there would be that period where people could park.
Okay. So you'll add that in, so that would be, that would be in the CCNRs, the final, once that process is completed?
That's correct. We can put language into the CCNRs that just indicate to the homeowners that there will be a parking district for this project and that they need to go and get their permits from the, the police department for, for that.
If it's approved by the city.
That's correct. And so again, there, there's some elements that, that aren't there right now, but again, it's not knowing where we're going right now. And so until we get a little bit better direction, we can refine all this stuff and, and address all your concerns.
Okay. Can I ask one more question? What is the minimum park for staff? Minimum number of spaces that are required for that? I know it's in here, but I was, I was doing some, some different math because I was just trying to look at some numbers because what the applicant submitted said that what the way they calculated on their exhibit M is, there's four spaces per unit, if you count the garages. And then I was looking at other areas in our code because, and I do appreciate the fact that there's a, a parking issue and everybody has a parking issue in Old Town and in other areas and this, this area has a specific parking sensitivity, thank you. But they don't own someone else's problems, they have to own their own issues. And so I was trying to just put a reasonability test to saying, okay, the applicant says that they got four spaces per unit if they count the garages, but when I counted it, I counted driveways and streets, you know, just saying, okay, there's ninety-two parking places in the driveways, there's seventy-six on the street. To me, that kind of is a hundred and sixty-eight really available. Well, with sixty-five units and two, you know, just in a basic world, like you have a single-family residence, you have to have two parking spaces, that's a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty spaces plus fifteen percent for visitors. I came up with a hundred and fifty spaces and they have a hundred and sixty-eight if they don't count garages. So am I missing something? Because I know they count the garages, but we don't.
Yeah, they're over on their parking.
Okay.
One thing I want to clarify is, we don't have, we don't have four spaces per unit. We have four spaces for all the units that are detached, single-family and the interior units, but the exterior units along A Street, we only have two with a garage and a driveway.
Well, I just took two hundred and sixty-three divided by sixty-five.
Yeah, I was just making sure you knew that we didn't have four. I didn't want to mislead you and make you think that we had four for every unit.
No, I don't think there's four dedicated for each one. I was just trying to put, trying to put a reasonability test to say if we were building a sixty-five houses, single-family, we'd make sure everybody had two parking spaces. We got a bonus because we have fifteen percent for visitor parking and that's a hundred and fifty and without counting garages, I got a hundred and sixty-eight. And I know there's other requirements because they have to have more parking than there. So I was just trying to figure out if I was missing something or not, so.
And I just want to comment really quick on Chair Simpson, something she said and this is more for the public who maybe watch, who may watch this or who's here tonight. There've been a lot of discussions and we've heard from people on parking issues that exist in that area. I know it's very sensitive, but I want to make sure everybody understands that these, these exist now and we don't want to make this the responsibility of a new applicant to address. Beyond, beyond their own parking issues, their, their application is not, we're not going to require them to design it in such a way that it fixes existing problems.
Right, we legally, we can't legally do that, so, okay. There more questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I just have another one. Regarding your CCNRs and HOA, once you leave the project, you're, you're built out and you've sold all the homes. I believe you had mentioned in the previous meeting that you would hand it over to the homeowners to create their own HOA, so it would be the homeowner's responsibility to enforce any CCNR rules, is that correct?
It would be the homeowners with the help of the property management company. It would be the homeowners with the help of the property management company. So many times, they rely on the property management company to do the heavy lifting, if you will, so they do not have to go and work with their neighbors directly.
Yeah.
So that kind of helps soften the impact a little bit from neighbor to neighbor. But, you know, it is our goal to set this project up with all the design elements in place to make it successful. That's, I mean, we're in the business of selling homes, and we don't sell homes if the project doesn't work. And so we want to make sure that we've addressed all of your concerns, and we've put elements in place in the CCNRs that make it operate in the way that we all vision this to work. And so until we get to eighty percent occupancy, we are going to be with this project that long, if not longer. Sometimes I've seen it go to ninety percent occupancy. And so by that time, you've kind of gained some people who have demonstrated an interest in this area, want to be a part of the HOA, want to be a president, want to be a treasurer, want to be active in their community. And so they kind of percolate up, if you will, on their own as we get, you know, owners into this project. And so it's really not been a problem for us and our other projects to get the HOA transferred to the homeowners because we're there so long, and we're having meetings as the project's being built. We're conducting HOA meetings and getting them to know the property management company, our style, what we're looking for, what the CCNRs say, what the bylaws say, how to run the meeting, all those different things there. We are with them through that process.
So just for clarification, so when you leave and the homeowners are working with this outside source, the outside source or property management company, I live in Woodhaven, so I'm familiar with the CCNRs, and we pay a fee periodically for our services. Is that what's going to happen here that...
That's correct.
Okay, so they will, ten years from now, they will still have an outside management company maintain, helping, helping the homeowners to maintain this, this subdivision?
I would hope so.
You hope so, yeah.
There are, there are HOAs that decide they'll do it on their own.
Yeah.
My preference would be that they stick with the property management company because it makes life a lot easier. They handle a lot of problems. They really help them navigate the waters and keep their budgets in check. And, you know, in terms of the fees that they would pay for this project, it's going to be based on the open spacing, the amenities. And so we try to keep those rather low, so it's not too much of an impact on the property owners when they buy into these projects. One thing we've found is, you know, when you get your dues up too high, it starts to defeat the purpose of having it because people aren't interested in paying that much a month. And so we try to get it proportionate to, you know, what people would be willing to pay.
Yeah, I've, I've been involved with, with the whole situation with Woodhaven, and it's a wonderful neighborhood. But like you said, with, even with the pride that we have in our neighborhood, without that outside management company, there are still difficulties trying to, having other various homeowners comply with certain rules and regulations. So it's always good to have that extra.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, you know, it would be great if we lived in a perfect world and everybody just followed the rules and we didn't have to have police. But, you know, we do have to have these mechanisms in place, and we are fully prepared to do that and make sure that this is successful.
And so will you, so you'll have a property management company contracted?
That's correct.
As you transition out of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're there right now with all of our projects. Blue Mountain is. And so they get to know the neighbors before we make that transition. They've already developed a relationship with them. The people that are coming into the project see how they operate, and quite frankly, they don't want to lose that. They like that. It takes a lot of burden off them. They don't have to put the budgets together and all that. And it's a third party managing that, so there's a little bit more confidence in the homeowners that someone's not going to be dipping in and taking dollars out of the HOA because it's going to be managed by a third party. So that also adds a little bit of a security to the HOA, if you will.
Good. So your HOA would have, your HOA board would actually have to vote out a management company?
That would be correct.
Great.
But to clarify, you, after the turnover, the builder has no way of controlling whether or not that professional management company is maintained, because in fact, all the time, HOAs decide not to use a professional management company after turnover due to the cost. So just to clarify, with your preference...
It would be a decision that they could make.
But it is a decision, yeah.
That's, that's correct.
Chair Simpson, I also wanted to mention that there is a concern that HOAs, in some cases, simply cease to exist, cease to operate, in which case the care and maintenance of common elements becomes an issue. I've seen it particularly, two cases come to mind. On the east side, when that happens and grasses get too high, it becomes a fire danger. So we helped a sister, the City of Sisters, add provisions to the CCNRs that allowed the city to go in and cut the grass to mitigate the fire hazard. Also, I remember at Multnomah County, when there are common elements that generate property tax revenue and the HOA simply ceases to exist, then that, those common elements fall to the county through tax, property tax foreclosure, which then becomes a different sort of problem. So staff has asked me to look into how to add provisions to the CCNRs to allow the city to go in and at least mitigate maintenance issues and assess the costs against, we're not sure yet, benefited properties probably. But in some way, if the HOA ceases to operate or to exist, that would allow the city to maintain those common elements so as to prevent the weeds from getting too high and trees from, you know, becoming dangerous and so on. And there will be time to make those revisions before the CCNRs are finally approved.
Yeah, we could have our attorney work with Chris, and they could work on that language and get it dialed in. But, you know, when you have a project where you're trying to accomplish a wide range of goals, and open space being one of them, there's really not another way to address managing that than some type of HOA. And so I do understand what, what was said here, but at the same time, I think you have to balance that a little bit with the objectives of doing a PUD project and requesting open space and having these, these type of situations. And so we would like to make sure that we have the CCNRs that you would like to have, to make sure that your concerns are addressed. And so we would like to work with staff to be able to make sure that the language is worded correctly.
So everyone would think that, given the open space and given the layout of the, of the development, I have strong concerns that this will eventually be predominantly rentals, which is, would be predominantly rentals, rental properties over time. And I think that where you see a lot of the HOAs that I've witnessed fail, it tends to be neighborhoods that where they're no longer owner-occupied. And so I would feel much more comfortable if I knew that the city had the ability to move in and do the maintenance that was required if the HOA fails.
So that's, you'll staff, staff couldn't put together a condition that, well, the CCNRs have to be approved by staff, so that'll be part of the process.
That's correct.
And we already have that in.
Yeah, exactly.
Let me just remove, make sure that that's...
I think I see everybody's point in, I mean, the concern, I think you guys are, I think the CCNRs are doing what they're intended to. But the fact too is, is that, and Chris would know the exact percentage, but the fact is, is that if a, if a certain percentage of residents of an HOA development say, "We don't want CCNRs anymore," they go away anyways. So, I mean, there's no one-hundred percent guarantee.
And I'm not positive, and maybe Mr. Green can help me, but I do believe I have seen...
You can ask Chris, but I'm pretty sure if a percentage of residents decide no more CCNRs, they can, they can legally have those removed.
Strictly speaking, yes, because it's a matter of contract between the sixty-sixth property or sixty-five property owners. That said, it would put the property, if it's required as a condition of approval, it would put all sixty-six out of compliance with their land use approval. So do we enforce then or require them to go back and do, you know, adopt new CCNRs against all sixty-five property owners?
And that's exactly where I was going.
Hopefully, that will, that will happen the day after I retire.
So I think I'm less concerned with sixty-six homeowners banding together and getting rid of CCNRs than I am about an HOA disbanding or just becoming abandoned, in fact, and them not being enforced.
And that's what happens. People stop signing up for the office to be treasurer or secretary. People just don't want to pay the assessment anymore, so they stop paying the assessment. The people, the property management company or the HOA doesn't want to force their neighbors to cough up the cash. It just gets very awkward, so they say, "Just forget it," and it stops operating. Never formally disbands, but doesn't operate either, so, which is functionally the same thing.
And to that point, and I've seen it in other CCNRs where to do away with the HOA, sometimes you can write that into your CCNRs or your bylaws that it requires approval by the city to do that. And so, not sure if you've seen that before, but I think you're also...
It doesn't solve the problem if they just, they never take formal action to get rid of the CCNRs. They just stop calling meetings, stop imposing and collecting assessments.
Right. And I, you know, there's, there's nothing you can really do about that.
I don't think you're the only community that faces this issue.
Correct.
And I think if we get staff to work with our attorney and their attorney to make sure that the CCNRs and the condition of approval is clear, that what the goals and objectives are, we are doing the best we can.
And I think that's all we can do.
Granted, HOAs fail, but, I mean, we also need to look at the fact that, at least here in Sherwood, there's also very successful HOAs. Woodhaven, for example, that's a very successful HOA. You don't pay, I mean, it's, you don't cut your, everything's immediate with whatever, I don't know, who's our property management company?
It used to be North, because north of...
Yeah, and so, and that's a very successful HOA, so I think that...
And so the realities of HOAs have been discussed tonight.
Yeah.
And, you know, some are hugely successful and operate quite well. Others have failed. It has happened.
And just again, I think that the big difference between Woodhaven and this potential neighborhood will be owner occupancy versus rental.
Well, again, they're going to be sold as, you know, owner occupied. I understand that things happen. I'm sure there's some renters in Woodhaven as well. But yeah, those things do happen. That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. I presume there are blue cards for people to testify? And we'll be looking for people in favor. We have one, two. We only have one. If you want to testify tonight, I'd remind you to submit a blue card to the recording secretary. If you're in favor of this application, if you're opposed to this application, and we have one submitted that's others. So our clause you have submitted for this.
Robert James Claus, 22211 Southwest Pacific Highway. Mr. Greens, you take the time to read John Hannah's book on condominiums. That's who we use. We never had anybody walk away from homeowners association that couldn't afford to. Too big a chance of litigation among tenants that they could settle, but that's a matter he'll work out with the staff. But I have a whole different point I want to make to you tonight. And they, this group has been very, very solicitous and reasonable. First of all, this is a conceptual thing. This council, the planning commission, no one's ever gotten over. You understand we do not plan any area in the United States under urban renewal guidelines for fish and wildlife. Now you think about that a minute. The fish and wildlife builds a refuge system specifically for fish and wildlife. And that's specifically why Dingle did not want this refuge here. He opposed it when Mark Hatfield took in the refuge. He said, "They simply will not take the feeders and the creeks they need to, going into the refuge, and clean them up and make them so they sustain fish and wildlife." Now, I'm not going to get into this elaborately, but fish want water, about a hundred and fifty total dissolved salinity parts per million. We're happy to drink it at three-hundred-and-fifty. You get it down for fish, you have a sustainable environment. It's that simple. Refuges are always sustainable environments. They're built that way for fish and wildlife. They're much more sensitive. This group has been willing, and I don't know if you understand, but this property is originally owned by Howard Hadley. Hadley sold, I think Joe and Laura Brobher sold originally to Syntex, and Jim Rapp went to him and said, "Will you give that buffer of Chicken Creek?" And Hadley charged no money. He gave it. At that time, when they put it in, they put the sewer line down it too. You know, we're always brilliant. How do you build a sewer line? You find where a creek runs, you run sewer at the same angle. It'll flow because the creek flows. They didn't mitigate that. Now, it was a gift, but when they put the sewer line there, they didn't mitigate it. Now, my concern is that area that opens up on Cedar Creek for fish and wildlife. That's why I went to Barbara Roberts. I don't want a path down there. There's no, there's a number of endangered birds just won't go near a path. They're not going to nest there. They're too easily intimidated. These guys have offered, but there's going to be a big problem. The fish and wildlife really can't come in and help plan it or work with them or send a specialist without some invitation from the city. It's actually rule and regulation for them. Now, they're willing to cooperate fully, and D.R. Horton is more than capable of doing the work. They didn't get to be the biggest old builder in the United States because they can't build a good subdivision. Say what you want about the United States, but you have to be number one, you've done something right. They're willing to help, but if this planning commission just gives them, because I, my family, not I, it's my wife's, she's let this fool spend the money. I've spent a fortune down there. And this last year, and I won't trap him, I'm not going to trap him, it's the end of the discussion. I put it in public property, so they can't trap him. There are beaver coming in there, and they keep cutting the trees down. So we're going to have to go back next year, and I'm going to have to replant it all over again and fence it. You know, because he's going to come in to take those trees. He's upset. Beaver teeth grow all our life. They'll go right through their head if you let them. So they have to cut down trees, but they live on grasses. They prefer alfalfa, but they certainly like green grasses. So he goes in there and cuts the trees down, pulls them down to the stream, then he goes and eats. But if you cooperate with them or make a directive in the fish and wildlife, I've talked to Clean Water Services. I've gone over my time, and I'm apologized, but you have a problem there that Hadley Street is set to loam. And it's starting to degrade that whole watershed. Now, I want to get into watershed discussion because we've increased the flow by forty percent. So you have plenty of water there. It's a matter of getting a management plan. Now, I know Brad will work with fish and wildlife, but you have to give a directive, and I don't know what to do. And I will also tell you that you're going to step on some toes. Because if you start planning for fish and wildlife, you're the first city in the United States that are inside their zoned area, in spite of what Dingle says, he never knew anything anyway, knew about cars.
So...
This could happen, but you have to initiate. James? It wouldn't happen if you don't initiate it here tonight, because they can't do it. They won't even come in.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Hi, Jennifer Harris, Sherwood, Oregon. I just was wondering what the option is of adding in the CCRs a percentage cap on rentals. We had that in the condo community that I first lived in when I bought my first condo in my twenties, and they had a cap on the rentals that the entire community could have. I don't know if that's an option, but it does tend to go a different direction when fifty percent or more of a neighborhood is rental, so that's all. Didn't even need the time.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to testify tonight? And I do want to acknowledge for the record that we did have the Brobher's letter and email, and we did try to address the comments and questions and concerns right at the beginning of the hearing for those. Hearing or seeing no one else coming up with blue cards in their hand, we will close, I can't close yet. I've had the applicant return and for rebuttal on the remaining time, which I believe was a lot more than... A lot, twenty minutes.
You know, there, there's...
Twenty minutes and...
I think I'd just like to note that since the last hearing, we have met with Mr. Claus to go over some of his concerns and try to get those addressed. So we are working with him on, on his concerns to get those resolved, and so just wanted to let you know that. And in terms of the percentage on the rentals, I'm sure we can work something out. I don't know what that would be, what that percentage would be. I'd have to go back and speak with, you know, our president to find out where his comfort level is, but if that's an issue that, you know, becomes a matter that we need to address, we could certainly, you know, work with you to find out where that number is. So I mean...
I, I.
I don't know if you're, I'm just trying to respond to them. I don't know if that's a concern for you right now, so short of you telling me that that's your concern.
I, I don't, I, I've heard concerns that rentals become a potential opportunity for issues, but I also then, how do you regulate someone's right to rent out their own property? I don't know how, I don't know how you could do that in a CCNR legally. I turn to the attorney as I say that.
Yeah, I don't know. In my interest, I don't know, and I don't care, because the CCNRs are a contract between the property owners. If, and so, as the city, I wouldn't be comfortable requiring that as a city mandate. If the property owners themselves choose to add that to the CCNRs, they can contract among themselves however they choose, and then they can enforce it however they choose. But it wouldn't be this, the city either requiring or enforcing it.
Yeah, I would, I would be hard pressed to set a legal precedent for requiring a homeowner to do something particular.
Right. We tried doing that when I worked at the Shrewsbury County, and it didn't work well at all.
I don't know if we could afford the legal bill at the city level.
Yeah, we had people up in arms.
Are there any other questions for the applicant before we close the public hearing?
I just have one. And again, going back to the stormwater facility, you know, we're looking at a fairly large project, you know, smashed into a small space with all these houses being, and, I mean, is it based on what we have right now with documentation and all of the people who have worked on the project? It's, it looks like the existing facility is feasible, that there, we won't, there won't be maybe utilizing another part of the project where you may have to construct another facility for stormwater management?
If there was the need to go elsewhere, there is another stormwater facility just south of the roundabout on Cedar Brook, just southwest there of the, the roundabout. That was not something that we wanted to go to because the other one made more sense, it was larger. And so, if necessary, that we could try and see if we could split the capacity. But that would not be the preferred choice. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not using some of the open space that is considered pedestrian oriented, where you would be having to utilize that space for some additional stormwater management.
At this time, that's not proposed.
Okay.
So, we're, we're not showing that, and, and we're, we believe that as it's designed, it's, it's operational and functional and can be done.
So, based on the staff report and the conditions that were previously presented in the original staff report, and the, I think there were a couple added just, just tonight, are there any other issues that we have not adequately addressed, with the exception of, and I would like to go back to staff, clarification on F5 and G5, which are, your comment was final single lot occupancy would enable you to delay to that point. And I think under discussion, to me, that means 64 lots could be built, and we don't have the amenities that the community is expecting from the PUD versus at a different percentage point based, you know, how long do you think it's going to take for this project to build out?
16 months.
16 months.
We, we plan on starting four units a month.
And, and so, you would have, and your, your timeframe was about a year to go through the.
Through the permitting process for putting the trail down in that area.
Clean Water Services process. So, we could.
And there's also the state level as well, DSL.
DSL and stuff, yeah.
Exactly.
So, it, it would not be unreasonable to condition it to be within 12 months period of time, that it would be, that the lot would be built and a percentage of not, you know, I don't want 64 lots built and all occupancy permits, and we don't have any of the amenities for the, for the community versus understanding that you're going to need to get 12 lots done at the same time you're doing all the permitting process, then we can say at that time, at the time 40 lots are done, then we would expect that the.
Well, again, and, and just, there's the permitting, and then there's the building of that. And so, and not tying it to the, the last single family unit, you could tie it to the last multifamily unit or, or, you know, three-plex. And so, you have a larger structure, if you will, not just the last one single unit.
Yeah, I just want to tie it to something that it protects the community's investment in this project also.
And that's why we were recommending the bonding, so, so the dollars are there for the build of that. And that's the only amenity we're talking about right now that, you know, would not be there as we build the project. So, all the other open space amenities would be constructed at the same time.
The active play areas.
All the roads, all the other infrastructure, all that would be built. And we're, so, it's the trail that we're trying to work with you on, just due to the complexities of getting it permitted and, and then built. And so.
So, then the, the park area and the other little pocket parks that you're doing along there, I guess I, I bolt them all into one, one process, that those would all be done, and your final occupancy would be contingent on all of them being done. And you're saying the other ones will be done much earlier, and then we could, we could have.
Just focus on the trail.
So, the conditions of the other amenities would be much earlier in the process, and the trail itself would be tied to the last phase of development.
That's, that's what we're talking about, yes. All the other amenities would be constructed with the build of the project. So, when the streets were being built and all the other infrastructure was being put in, we would start working with, putting in all those other, the, the dog park that we've talked about, the, the trail network that we've shown, the.
All the stuff in.
All the other amenities in there would be built with the project. It's just the trail itself that we're trying to get some flexibility on because of the permitting. And, and we just didn't want to be delayed on being able to sell homes while we're trying to get that permitted. But we, we know it's important, and we want to address it, and we're just trying to find what we can do, you know, where the comfort level is for everybody to be able to say, "This is the trigger point."
Okay. So, I think I, I think I understand. I just want to, I want to understand, before we close the public hearing.
Sure. No, I appreciate that.
We can't take anymore. I want to make sure that if we go under deliberation and say interior amenities will be done as it builds, and occupancy permit is not tied to it, and then, you know, some other trigger is the trail trigger.
Yeah, and so, really, what we're trying to say is that, that trail will be fully constructed prior to that final unit or, or building, whatever it is, is allowed to be occupied. And so, because, you know, 12 months is, is a reasonable time to anticipate that that's what it would take to get through this permitting process, but it, it can take longer. And so, that's where we're trying to find that flexibility. If it's 12 months, and that's a hard, fast thing, it could stop the project a little bit while we try to get through the hoops that DSL and, and the other agencies have for us. I'm sure fish and wildlife will be brought into that conversation, and, and other agencies will be notified as we submit for these permits. They will have comments. And, and so, it can be quite exhausting and time consuming to get through. And so, we're just trying to buy that time so we can get through it and, and not stop the project.
Okay. I just want to make sure we pass on to council something that is cohesive and comprehensive, and everybody's on board before it gets to them. We don't want to hand them something they have to fix.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate that. And then, there were other questions that we had from staff on a couple of other conditions. And I've spoken with Michelle, and she's alerted to me that, you know, the fencing was for the east property boundary separating the apartment complex and our property line, and so, we were fine with that. And the other one was fencing for that pedestrian access to the apartment complex. And so, appreciated that clarification. That's really what we're looking for. We have no problem fencing those areas. And so, I think this is really the only condition that we're trying to find the, the correct language for.
Okay, all right.
Great.
All right. I see no other people with questions for the applicant, so I'm going to go ahead and formally close the public hearing. And at this time, final comments by staff.
So, I think the only outstanding issue really remaining is the issue concerning the bonding for the trail portion. And I would defer to Bob on what his recommendation is with respect to that. I think you, Chirstensen, have addressed kind of where that comfort level is for making sure that we do have that deliverable of, of the trail constructed in a timely fashion. Problem would be with leaving just one unit remaining, that they could hold that out for an extended period of time, and, and that would be a challenge for us to get the final trail built. So, that would be balancing those issues, and I defer to Bob on that.
With something like this, we're dealing with D.R. Horton on our current one, and what we did is we did two compliance agreements. One related to the, for, for the majority of the infrastructure, which allowed them to get their, the majority of their lots sold and building construction and, and actually do occupancy on the majority of the site while we still held out a, a certain section of it as a second phase with its own compliance agreement, own bonding requirements. In this case, we could do that with the trail, and then hold out a, a condition saying, "Okay, along with this phased, second phase is these units," and I'm not sure what that proportionality would be, "won't receive occupancy until the trail's completed." But it would be a balancing act between the cost of the trail being completed and the unit cost, something similar in the amount, such that the, the need for them to actually get that trail done is sort of driven by the fact that they want to make that profit up there in the sale of that unit, too.
And I, if the commission has an idea of a number that they'd like to propose, or we can make that recommendation to the council with Bob putting together some numbers so that the final recommendation to council includes a comprehensive look at phasing all the public amenities, with the exception of the trail, as you discussed, conditioned as it was being developed, and then based on a real analysis of what, you know, is it, is it three, three units in one building, or is it three buildings? Based on proportionality, then we can have.
Right. We can't, we can't be, we can't be excessive in it.
And then, unless someone from the commission has a very good understanding of what that number would be, I would say we can make a recommendation that that final percentage number for the recommendation on final occupancy permit is recommended, and the number is inserted at the council hearing.
Why, I would, I would just.
And looking at Brad to say, "What is she doing? Why is she doing this on the fly to the staff?"
No, no. My concern is, is how are you defining proportionality? And so, are we just saying, I mean, if your concern is, is that you want the trail occupied, or I mean, you want the trail constructed, they said it's going to take them, they're going to pull four, four permits a year, I mean, four, four permits a month. And that would mean that it's going to take them 16 months. And they're absolutely right, because you're going to have DSL, the Army Corps of Engineers possibly, and Clean Water Services to deal with on this trail. Not to mention, there's going to be a limited in-water work window that they're going to have to work within, and whether that's July next year to September, that's typically it, the two-month period that they allow in-water work. And that's just the portion of the trail that would go across the water. Outside of that, where there's not running water, they have different parameters. So, I would, I would think that it wouldn't be unfair to say that you would withhold occupancy on, say, the final five or, you know, five or six units, however you want to put that together.
Because I was doing math in my head, and that's always great. 13 months from now with four permits per month is 52 units. That leaves 13 unsold units that then also gets them into that July through September window, so that we could, with assurity, know that the last 13 units would get their occupancy permits when the trail's built.
Which I think is funny. It's going to take them time to build those 13 units, too, and that's why I went down to five, or even four, because it's still going to take them time to build them. They might pull the permits, but it's still going to take them time. 13's fine. I just think that there has to be some rationale behind.
Well, my rationale was four, four permits per month, June through July of next year is 52 units. That gets them 13 units left that we would withhold occupancy permits on unless the trail's built July through September of next year.
So, if they're, if they're doing, if they're pulling four a month, is there, why not just withhold the last four?
It's up to you guys. I just want there to be some rationale behind that question.
I'm sorry, pulling building permits or COOs?
COO.
COOs.
I don't know. 13 seems like a high amount of.
It's up to you guys. Yeah, I mean, really, realistically, four units for them, that's quite a bit of money. So, it's not like they're going to walk away from four units to avoid building that trail.
Okay.
It's entirely up to you though.
I don't have a perspective. That's why I was saying if we, I know you didn't want me to have Bob pick a number, and I was uncomfortable with us picking the numbers, so.
I have a dartboard at my desk, too.
I'm not.
But yours is in front of.
Yeah.
The audience on camera and other people that are smarter than me.
I'm not uncomfortable. I think if they're pulling four permits a month, and that you withhold the last four certificates of.
It really is entirely up to you. I just want there to be some rationale behind it.
Okay, so that.
I wanted to add just one other thing on the CCNRs. I want you guys to understand that the city does not enforce CCNRs. You can certainly ask for the applicant to include certain provisions within the CCNRs. Clearly, within our purview, their public amenities have to, or their common amenities have to be protected and maintained through those CCNRs, and that's what we're going to look at. The discussion on rentals versus ownership, I mean, if you think out long-term, what you do by limiting ownership means and rentals, they do it on the coast because they have a problem with rentals. You do it here in Sherwood, you're going to have problems with aging in place. Like, people who want to downsize don't have options, housing options, because it's easier for them to rent or something. I, I just don't, don't think that renters are bad people, because they're not bad people. Some renters are bad people. And keep it, I mean, and thinking of your kids, too. I mean, your kids go, they're not going to be able to come back to Sherwood to afford a house at $350,000 right out of college unless they win the lottery on their way home. But, so, you think about, these are housing options that are available to people in town that may not have liquid assets available.
And my concern about a rental neighborhood was not that it would be a bad neighborhood. It was just that, in terms of an HOA, that does tend to be, when you have single-family residences where there, where you have more rentals, it does tend to be where I've seen it more frequently, the HOAs more frequently become abandoned.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you. I think if the rentals overtake the ownership, but oftentimes, I think the owners are going to fight for the HOA because they're going to protect against bad renters, too. So, there will be the balance at some point, checks and balances, but we can't control that.
We can't, we can't control it, and we could talk all night about how we wish the world were perfect. And as someone said tonight, that we didn't have to have rules or police officers either, so.
Yeah. I just, I think that if you look, traditionally look at all the neighborhoods in Sherwood, I, I don't foresee an entire development turning into a rental market, so.
My neighbor did.
I mean, I'm sure there will be some, but.
So, any other discussion about the materials in front of us on this application? And then.
So, can we take a quick break before we deliberate?
Okay.
That'd be great.
You need to take a break.
Just real quick. Five minutes.
Okay, so, we're going to have a five-minute recess before we complete our deliberation.
Thanks.
Well, if it prove.
Yes. Well, that's the motion.
All right, we're going to call the meeting back to order and have deliberation by the planning commission. And I just want to start, I spoke during the break with Bob and Brad regarding the conditions and make sure that we're providing clear direction to staff so that the staff report and the conditions that are forwarded on to council are clear. And so, we had discussed at the beginning of the meeting that there needed to be a D16, which ties down the elevations on the final plans prior to the approval of the public improvement plans would need to match the townhome design standards, and that's the roofs and the facade garage door percentages. And there are, the one that we've been discussing quite a bit have to do with the DF5 and G5 regarding the trail construction. And the trail, so, G5 says construct and install pathway and other open space amenities described in the final development plan. And I am going to propose that we add excluding the trail connection conditioned in G7, and then add a G7, which sums up our previous conversation that the trail must be completed prior to the final occupancy permits issued. prior to the final occupancy permits issued to one of the following, either one townhome building or three single-family homes, depending on, at the builder's discretion. One town building. So that it, depending, and this I got some direction from Bob, cause I don't know where staging's gonna be or where things are gonna happen, and so if they have a run on townhomes, then they can build out all the townhomes, but they don't get the final occupancy on three single-family. If they have a run in single-family, then they don't get final occupancy permit on the last townhome building, whether it be whichever building it happens to be, and they all are three to five-
Right.
-separate units within a building. So we have the same proportionality, so.
Yep.
As a commission, are you-
I think that's perfect.
In agreements to the conditions as, okay, so we're gonna modify those, and then how does that affect F5, which is the design, construct, and pay? So do we remove F5 then? Or do we just have them bond for it? I'm not sure how that language, that, they still bond for-
Are they still bonding for it?
Yeah, they would still bond for it, they'd still have to put together-
Okay, so, so that's, that F5 stays as a bonding mechanism, but it doesn't affect their ability to get their occupancy permits throughout the process. Phew, all right, so, um, so that we can have further deliberation, is there a motion?
I move the Sherwood Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for Cedar Brook subdivision, PUD 14-01 subdivision 14-01, based on the applicant testimony, public testimony received in the analysis findings, and conditions as the sta, in the, conditions in the staff report, including the amendments discussed by Commissioner Simpson.
There a second?
Second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve, uh, that we approve a recommended approval. No, that's not right.
We forward a recommendation.
A recommendation of approval. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say that this has been a very difficult development for me to review. I, I think that based on the current laws, the way that they've been written, the current zoning, that it leaves us very few choices regarding whether or not we should accept it, but at the same time, I think that when our land use laws were changed in the 1970s, I don't think that this was the kind of development really, realistically, that they thought a PUD would be benefiting from. I, I think that, you know, just looking at, I think there's not the, even with the open space that's been provided by the applicant, it just doesn't seem sufficient for families. It does not, um, I'm sure, you know, the applicant has said it's gonna be a beautiful neighborhood, but I do have serious concerns about the parking issues that are, and we're not in, able to expect more than what we're getting, but I think even the removal of a few additional homes, you, having the 65 homes as a, as a minimum standard in the size of development, it just seems, you know, that it is, it's cramming them in, and I don't think that it's the kind of neighborhood that we should really be realistically looking at to the benefit of the city. So I, serious concerns, and at the same time, recognize that legally, I think that we're in a position where it kind of is what it is.
And, and I understand what you're, I, I understand your concern, cause 65 units on five acres seems like a lot to me. The other option would be 65 to 90 apartments, and I think that the benefit this PUD provides is the opportunity for more single-family homeownership, and I think we've, we've got parking, I mean, I think they've got parking for their own, I think unfortunately, they're gonna inherit the neighbors' parking problem also, so I think we've got, I, I think we've got-
Yeah, but I think they've done a good job with the, with the parking. I think they, I think they have a good plan to mitigate the, the neighbors-
With their-
With their, with their parking. And to be honest, they're providing a whole lot more parking than we have anywhere in Woodhaven. So, I mean, it's, we don't have near-the-street parking these guys have. So, we have bigger driveways, but-
We don't wanna-
Yeah, so, anyway.
So, if there's-
I have to agree that we, I mean, we could easily, ending up with a second development exactly like the one that's there, I'd rather see 65, I'd rather see a nice neighborhood development for a single-family, or for, you know, homeownership, like Chair Simpson said, it's-
All right, if there's no further deliberation or changes, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of recommending approval to the City Council on PUD 14-01 and SUB 14-01, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. And now we're going to move on to new business, which is a public hearing, LA 14-01 Kelly House Edition Landmark Alteration. And I will read the public hearing script. The public hearing on LA 14-01 Kelly House Edition Landmark Alteration is called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the report, 15 minutes. Questions, if any, by the hearing body for staff. We will then open the public hearing for testimony, and time will be limited as follows. Applicant, 30 minutes, split between presentation and rebuttal. Persons in favor of the application, four minutes each. Persons opposed to the application, four minutes each. Rebuttal from the applicant, remainder of the 30 minutes. We will then close the public hearing. No other comments will be heard from the public or the applicant. There'll be final comments from the staff, questions of staff, if any, by the commission, and then discussion by the commission. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the blue testimony forms and submit it to the Planning Commission Secretary. The chair will recognize people who wish to speak, and any questions should be addressed through the chair. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. In reaching a decision on the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report. There are two copies of the staff report available in the room this evening. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria or other criteria you believe to apply to the decision. Please note, failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the City Council or Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Also, failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval, again, with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. At this time, I would like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest, indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing.
I first heard about this, um, this proposal, and during a school function, the applicant had no, it was the applicant's wife, and she had no idea that I was on Planning Commission, so we didn't discuss it any really further, she just mentioned that they were gonna be, you know, expanding their house in Old Town, and it kinda clicked, 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 oh, there's probably gonna, it was before even that it was noticed. And, uh, no, I don't feel that it'll happen, we, we're not close, we, we've met it through the school, our children attend the same school, and, uh, we will, I, we won't have any bearing on my decision.
All right. And would presumably all drove past it to get into the parking lot tonight, so we all have driven past the site. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any Pl, Planning Commission members' ability to participate? All right, so we will now have the planning staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Brad Kilby. So we are addressing Landmark Operation 1401. Uh, it's the little blue house here on the corner of First and Oak, um, and it shows on your screens now.
Oops.
They are proposing a 1,500-square-foot addition to the home. Um, and basically, I, I don't have a pointer, but it is, um, just north of City Hall, on the other side of Oak, it's on that corner. If you guys don't know where it's at, it's on that corner, as you're driving out of City Hall, right across the street, catty corner from you.
The one with the big sign in the front yard?
It's got a sign in front yard.
I saw the big sign, thank you.
Perfect. Uh, so as I said, they're proposing to construct a 1,500-square-foot, um, home, and I guess, it's in Old Town, so they have to meet the, the design standards. They proposed what I believe is in, uh, consistent with what our design standards propose. Their, one thing that you need to determine is they have non-conforming setbacks, so they have setbacks that are outside of what we would normally allow. But it's a pre-existing condition, that home was built on a 50 by 100, and they're building it on the same plane as the house, so the setback doesn't get further encroached into, um, it doesn't exacerbate the problem, there's a street between their house and the next house over, so I didn't personally see a problem with it, and, uh, staff is recommending approval of the-
They're going.
Um, proposed expansion. And with that, that concludes my staff report.
Okay.
And I would open it up to you for questions. You've all seen the materials, it all came, uh, and so.
All right, there's any questions? Without questions, we'll ask for the applicant, applicant to come forward and provide their presentation.
Rob Kelly, 224-55.
Rob Kelly, uh, 2, uh, 224-55 Southwest Oak Street. Um, I, um, the only thing I actually came to, uh, say is, uh, meeting with Brad, and after looking at our plans from our architect, just, uh, I don't know if it really a change, but a note that he wrote, um, that we're gonna be putting lap siding on the house, but it'll be the same reveal, what's on there now, 11-inch, which I think is really hard to get, I don't think they have that, but we're gonna be doing lap siding, but it'll be a 7-inch reveal. Other than that, what you have is what we're gonna do.
All right, um, any questions of the applicant?
I just- On the, the front door, um, it's, you know, there's, there's no, uh, the, the reason why you don't have a, uh, an overhang, is that the fact that it would create an additional re, work for you to, to get?
It's correct. The, uh, overhang that we have on the existing house is six inches, and a six-inch overhang over the front door would look kinda funny. Otherwise, I would love to put a door over there. And that's something we may apply for, uh, variance, a year from now or later after it's done, but for now, we're just gonna leave it as it is. Unless you would like to have one there.
It would, that's where it would encroach in the setback that's already outside of the-
Correct.
And they didn't apply for it, so can we, we can't give them a variance on the fly because it hasn't been noticed knowing.
They have not applied for a variance.
Yeah, and it wasn't noticed, so it'd be hard to, hard to do that on the fly.
Sure.
It'll look good with one, though.
And, and just to clarify, not that it makes much difference, but the addition is actually just under 1,500 square feet.
One question, is the tree that's there, cause I, as you can see in the picture, that, that's remaining in its entirety through the process?
It'll be trimmed back, but yes, I would like to leave it there.
Okay. I was, I think-
I guess a question for you, is that something I need to get permission if we decide that we do or need to cut it down? I don't know.
How big is it?
First time I lived in town in about 10 years, so.
Oh.
Yeah, um, we, you, as you know, uh, we changed the code a couple of years ago, um, which allows a homeowner, when it's not a street tree or anything, to remove up to, um, five trees or, uh, 10%, whichever's less on their lot individually, as long as they just could provide us with 24 hours of notice. I mean, we do have, um, minimum standards for canopy on street, or on trees, um, for residential zones. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Just one other question. When you're doing the lap siding, it, it's not gonna inhibit your, not putting in the, the belly band? That will still remain as part of the architectural feature?
That is something my wife is insisting on, so yes.
Okay. I, I do like it, actually, cause it does break up the-
And that's what she liked, too, and I couldn't care less, so. Yeah, so either the belly band will stay there, and the siding will just go above and beyond it.
All right, yeah.
And now, and now the, now the city is on her side, so.
Yeah. I'm screwed.
There you go. All right, um, I, if we have no more questions for the applicant, we'll call for other people's test advice, so.
Thank you.
Let's see, do we have a motion thing?
28 minutes and 44 seconds for rebuttal. All right, um, I first need to call for proponents or opponents, and we have our clause as other, so if you would, Agent- Come forward.
Now, I assume you know we've rebuilt the hotel. We've rebuilt Robinus, and under three-tap or two-hundred houses, we've rebuilt. Now, I'm totally in favor of this, but let me tell you something, you've really been a good group. Doug Clur was one of the top construction defect litigation lawyers in California, and he wanted to do that. Now, you know there are two codes, there are specification codes and the performance codes. Anything the US Conference on Building Concepts does starts with performance and then is calculated in the specification. I hope you make absolutely sure that on this house, they have the ability to go back because everything we remodeled, we had to get mail delivered. Now, you know it's two-by-four style, two-by-four. You start restoration, the two-by-four is a two-by-four in many cases. In many cases, your windowsills absolutely cannot conform. There's no reason they conform because there will be specifications. Once you build one, I know Scott will do this, you should make real, real allowances on performance standards, and going back to what you have, or you're not gonna have restoration, you simply will not have restoration. What you'll have is rebuilding. Best example I know for that, I was in one that's, Harold Pierce of the Arctic Tour, and we were doing four sign designs, and he showed me some buildings that were seven hundred years old. I laughed like, why did he drive the trucks? That wasn't the end. That wasn't bad. And in half a day, he said, well, but it was exactly the right material. And the only things we've changed here are whether the materials were superior. And then Sherwood, if Sherwood had this, there's some architectural, there's some of which have been down, some of which have been remodeled and weren't restored, that you've lost architectural gems. And I'm gonna encourage you next time you're in San Francisco to go on the side of campus and park. There, we built a district where you restore. Let me give you an example, some of the bathrooms are off the kitchen, you're not supposed to do. You don't restore, move that bathroom, leave the bathroom empty. That's the only way you can keep architectural remnants. And, you know, we've lost so many architectural remnants here. The theater, we still acted its type, it had a perfect Houston design. It had an acting stage, it had an orgy that was up at the fore, it had a crying room, it had two bedroom apartment. It had a restaurant and a theater purchase area. Under the flimsiest logic, I've reversed on that. It's actually one of the structures that they don't make out. The one built in Newburgh went down into an earthquake, and it couldn't have been built. I know your staff, and I know Scott worked with that, but you should help the staff in any way you still. It'll last longer, I mean, you've got this architecture, but if they simply lock the building to a degree, they'll be destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other blue cards, so applicant has an opportunity to rebut if he would like to, and he is declining, so at this point, I will close the public hearing, and have any final comments from staff?
My only comment was to respond to Mr. Claus, and, and, um, I looked through our historic preservation records for this specifica- preservation records for this specific house, like, had it, had it been looked at and considered as something that would be considered historically significant. And, um, in the 1989, um, version of our historic survey, there's specific houses and properties within Old Town that they referenced, but this was not one of them. And, and the one that we have not adopted, or, but that was shown to you last year, I think last summer, or maybe the summer before, where they had done that, um, this property was limit, or was a candidate, but it wasn't, um, listed, I mean, it was kinda on the marginal candidacy for anything. And we don't have any properties designated right now as historically significant, but everything in Old Town is considered a landmark, so hence the landmark alteration.
Yep.
All right, um, are there any questions by the staff at all? All right, then, do we have a motion?
I move the Sherwood Planning Commission approve the application for the Kelly House Edition, file number LA 14-01, based on the applicant testimony, public testimony received, the analysis findings, and conditions in the staff report.
One second.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass. Thank you very much. All right, there, are there any Planning Commissioner announcements? All right, then we are adjourned. Thank you.